Regular meeting. And I believe we have Pastor Jackson. Pastor Jackson, would you mind leading us in vocation? Alright, so stay standing and please join me for the pledge of allegiance. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. Thank you for that. And city attorney, I don't believe that we adjourned closed session. Is there anything to report?
That's correct, mayor. We have not adjourned closed session. There's nothing to report at this time. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And then a quick announcement is the city council are also members of the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority and Finance Authority, which are concurrently convening with the city council this evening, and each council member is paid an additional stipend of thirty dollars for attending the Housing Authority meeting and fifty dollars for attending the Finance Authority meeting. Next, we have a proclamations, commendations, and presentations, and we have certificates in recognition to Servis the Wrestling Team.
Can we do roll call?
Oh, yes. Sorry about that. I totally skipped roll call. City clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Alejandra Avila. Councilmember Monica Garcia. Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Damian.
Here.
And Mayor Emmanuel Estrada.
Here. Thank you for that, city clerk. And continuing, we are, we have certificates in recognition to the Servis the Wrestling Team, Mountain View League Champions, and it's presented to the Servis the Wrestling Team. Servis the Wrestling Team, would you like to join us up here behind the dais? And then, Councilmember Avila, would you like to present them the awards?
First of all, I want to welcome all of the Servis the Wrestling Team and their coaches and any of the parents that are here. I know Angela Salazar is here. I thought I saw her. She is a director? Assistant superintendent. I'm so sorry. For the Baldwin Park Unified School District, she's been with the Unified School District. So I know she's probably had some of these students at one point or another. And we are very proud to welcome, probably our parents too. But this is very exciting because Servis has been league champs six consecutive years. Let's give them a hand. I will tell you, these wrestlers, as a former team mom for the Servis the Wrestling Team, I know the work and hours you put into your sport. I know the dedication you have, not just only yours, but your parents and your coaches that spend so many hours working with you, talking to you. Not only are you excelling in the sport, but I know you have to do well in as well, because in order to be wrestling, you have to be. I commend you for that. It's not an easy sport, but if you're there, that means you're dedicated and you have the will to move. You're a fighter, so I congratulate you for that. I have certificates from the city of Baldwin Park, from the state senate, and from Assemblywoman's group and Senate group also. So I'm gonna start, it's separated in different areas, because I understand we had people go to CIF and masters and so and so. But I know every single one of you were part of being champs, so I'm gonna start with those names. Congratulations on winning the 2022 Mountain View League Wrestling Championship. We also commend you for being league champs for the sixth year in a row. We wish you continued success on your athletic endeavors and thank you for a favorable recognition through your school district and to the city of Baldwin Park, because all of you are products of Baldwin Park, and it makes us very proud to have you here. So I will start off, and as I'm calling your name, please come up here. Just stand in the back, okay? Let's start off with Simon Wen. Jason Avendano. And coach. Emmanuel Pablo. Arturo Arvisu. Robert Rodriguez. Joshua Torres. Arturo Cancola. Armando Serrano. Sebastian Garcia. Jean Espinoza. And then this, this group is separated. Commend you again for being the sixth year in a row league champs and for qualifying for CIF. So this group of students have qualified to CIF, and their names are Adrian Anguiano, Israel Martinez, David Soto, Jose Morales, Hilton Gutierrez, Robert Guerra, Alejandro Rodriguez, Jason Ton, Carlo Sanchez Mercado. Now, the following list, these wrestlers qualified for the CIF and masters. That's Josue Torres and Lauren Martinez. Don't mess with Lauren, you guys. Right, Lauren? And now, I want to also recognize the coaches for their leadership. And I understand every single one of you coaches have wrestled also, correct? Did you all wrestle for Servis as well? So isn't that amazing? We have former students from Servis that are now coaching, and they come back to their school to coach other students. And what better way to get back to your community but working with the youth that's coming up in our own community? So thank you, coaches. And the coaches are Coach Adam Lopez. Coach Adam Lopez, where are you? Ray Palacios. Anna Karen. I remember when Anna Karen was wrestling. And Juan Espinoza. So again, let's congratulate, let's congratulate them. As you see, we have girls here in the wrestling team. At one point, I remember, girls would not wrestle, but these girls are really tough. I don't know if anyone has ever been to a wrestling match, and when they see the girls on the mat, they have no mercy. They are tough. They are tough girls. So congratulations, everybody. Coaches, would you like to say anything?
I just wanna say, I just have a quick. I don't know if people are aware, but they underwent weekly testing. They had to be quarantined. Very frustrating. Forget it. It's out there, and we ignited the school year. Yes, we were back in person, but it was not a normal year, and so we representing the, also doing congratulations on us participating, let alone making it to the top. Great job.
And then I believe our senator wasn't able to make it today, but she did send a certificate for you in recognition of your accomplishments. I'll present it to me, 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 mo, or your coaches. And then, of course, you know, the city of Baldwin Park is very proud of the wrestling team and everything you do. And I was at, I was with Dr. Salazar at a separate event for a different high school. But I'll tell you what we told them, and that was that the city of Baldwin Park is very proud of you, and so is your district. And we're gonna continue working together to make sure that we offer you all the opportunities and resources that you can continue to excel, whatever it is that you.
I also, we also have a certificate of recognition from Assemblywoman Anka Ruto. Wrestler got a certificate, so Coach, I'm handing them over to what a recognition from the senate and from the senate. They all follow you guys. They know what you're doing, cheering for you every step. So those of you coming back are looking forward to seeing wrestles. So I am looking forward to some of those matches. Unfortunately, this year I didn't get to go, but I will definitely end the next matches as many as I can, so I can. I remember seeing Anna Karen and cheering her on when she was wrestling, so I plan on doing that as well. You have two more wrestlers. Come on up. Adrian Anguiano. So congratulations from the state assembly, and it says, it is with great pride that I joined the California State Legislature and the residents of the 48th Assembly District, commending you on your dedication to work which led to another outstanding season. Congratulations, Don. And Assemblywoman Ruto also you guys can attend matches. Also have recognition in the assembly for each one of the coaches. It is with great pride that I joined the residents of the 48th Assembly District for your unwavering commitment for the students, athletes of Vista High School, and commend your dedication to which led to another undefeated wrestling season. Congratulations, 2020 Mountain View League. Adam Lopez.
And just really quickly, before you all leave, again, I just want to congratulate each and every one of you for all that you guys are doing, not only representing your school or our district, but also your brothers and sisters. You know, you guys are all acting as role models for those folks in our community. So again, gracias, and more importantly, we'll see you all here next year. So at this moment, I will move to open public communication. City clerk, is there anybody looking to speak?
Thank you, mayor. We received no phone call requests, but we do have a couple of cards here. First is Catherine Lozier from our public library.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, community partners, and fellow community members. It's good to be back in person. The California State Library and the California First Partners Office is working with state parks to provide free, free use vehicle passes called California State Library Park passes, and those will be able to be borrowed from the library for a two-week period. We don't have them ready to go yet, but we're hoping to get them up and available soon. Customers borrow them just like they borrow a book, and it would provide free vehicle parking for a personal vehicle with up to nine, nine people in the vehicle or a single-use motorcycle pass. And then Baldwin Park Library is also offering free at-home COVID tests. Come in, pick one up. One per family member per day, so one person could come in and take one for each of their family members. And that will be while supplies last. And then with National Poetry Month taking place this month, we have some in-person programs. The next one we have at the Baldwin Park Library will be a teen program for blackout poetry for upcycling damaged books. And just like Michelangelo carved David from a block of stone, teens can take those upcycled book pages and make their own poems. And then a virtual program we have going on April 27th. It will be an author talk with West Hollywood's first poet laureate, Stephen Raines, and this will be about queer poetry. His book, A Quilt for David, will be read in following. Thank you so much for all that you do, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Ralph Galvan, he will speak on water awareness event and found the alarm event. Found the alarm event, sorry.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Honorable Mayor, council members, Mayor Pro Tem. My name is Ralph. I'm one of your board members on the Valley County Water District, and I invite the community to join us at our water awareness event May 13th from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m. For more information, visit www.vcwd.org. And on a separate note, did you know that fires, home fires claim seven lives a day in the U.S., but working smoke alarms can cut the risk of death in half? I invite the community to volunteer and install fire alarms or have a fire alarm installed at your home, happening Saturday, May 14th from 8:00 to 2:00 p.m. To make an appointment or volunteer, visit redcross.org/lahomfire. Thank you for your time, and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. Mayor, those were all the cars, cards we received. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that. And then, of course, acknowledging Ralph Galvan is also one of our water board members on the water, the water district, and I also see one of our commissioners, Ricardo Vazquez, planning commission. And so at this moment, I'll welcome anybody who didn't fill out a paper to come up and speak.
Hello, city, hello, city council, Baldwin Park residents. You people wanna raise our taxes. Man, you love to raise taxes. How many times do we gotta tell you? People are still in debt from the virus. I don't know, maybe you people don't know what that is. We have a lawyer that makes tons of money off of us. Waste, lot of wasted money, lot of wasted money. You people gotta understand, probably half of this city is on a fixed income. That doesn't matter to you guys, you ladies, gentlemen, or whatever you wanna be called. But boy, I'll tell you, you, every time you wanna raise taxes, it involves a lawyer. So maybe we oughta get rid of the lawyer. I know you people haven't decided yes or no, or yeah. But we need to do something in this city besides raise taxes. I know you people make a huge income. You're part-time employees. You're making tons of money. Well, there's people out there that don't make that kind of money. They don't get a super great retirement, which you people do get. You probably even get free gas, free phones, and so on and so on. We don't get that. We have to buy our phone. So why do you people gotta keep raising our taxes? Okay, you say it's city tax. Five people are gonna tell eighty-five thousand people you need to get a raise of taxes. That's not right. It takes all eighty-five thousand people to say yes or no, not five individuals. Maybe you people earn too much money. You know, it seems to me that's the problem. Doesn't matter you work part-time here, and you work in the schools, you work in some other place. We people that are retired don't get free income like you guys do. You know, you get free gas, free phones, or whatever else you can get. So I think you people should think about this city tax that's gonna hurt everybody in this city. It's not gonna only hurt you, all of us. So why don't you just let this slide by, maybe in a couple of years or next year or so on? You can bring it up again. Finance lady will probably tell you, oh, we need it. Well, if you quit wasting all this money on lawsuits, we wouldn't be in this kind of jam. You probably owe money from all the loans that you people have made, including your old residue.
Sorry, sir, your time is up.
I know, my time's up. Thank you. I'm gonna need a translator. Do we have a translator?
The translator.
Okay, I'm gonna talk in English. You translating in Spanish?
It's already being translated as you're speaking. He's translating in Spanish, so those who need the translation are hearing it. You can go ahead and speak in English. You have three minutes.
Okay, the last meeting we were here, and I listened to what Councilwoman Garcia said about, you know, making a study for the SOTANO and everything. That was done five years ago. The whole background, the meetings and everything, the people were excited about it. Who took it down? The ex-mayor, the ex-city council, and Garcia, the three of them voted it down. So you know, that thing about, you know, send, you know, postcards or send flyers to the residents. It's already been done. I went to all those meetings that they had. Everything was beautiful. The whole thing was already set go to go, and like I said, the mayor, Ocheco, and Garcia took it down. You know, so you know, it's, she just wasting money. He wants to waste money. You know, where, where's she thinking about? The study was done, so just go ahead and build it, and that's it. The money's coming from the state, and it's coming from Susan, you know. So you know, it's, to me, it's just jealousy. She's jealous of Susan being up there, and she's still over here. I hate to say it, but that's the way everybody's, I talk to, he says, what's the matter? Is she jealous about her? Because she got us the money? That I don't know. That's a little kind of a personal thing, but you know, it seems that way. But you know, and to do the taxes right now to help the people in Baldwin Park right now. Mayor, I'll directly to you. Let the residents have a yard sale once a month. That would help a lot of people that are just struggling. You know, give them that little hundred dollars they might get on the weekend, some to help them. That's the main thing, you know, help the people from the residents, you know. And I talked to some of my neighbors and my neighborhood and about the sale tax. This is not a year to raise the taxes. You know, the people are hurting, and they're hurting bad. They need your guidance to say, okay, let's do this. Let's help the people. Thank you.
Greg Tuttle, business owner. Last week I came up, talked about royal coaches and reviewing their contract. I understand some other cities are reviewing their contract too for doing problem cases with them. Also, I filed that complaint like I promised with the code people to go over there and look at their illegal building that has been put off for many, many years because of the favoritism of the other council, not this council, but the other council. Now I bring up the thing with the sales tax. You have a recession coming on. You have people that can't pay rent. You have people that are getting money from the state to pay rent. You're gonna, sometime or another this year, they're gonna have to start paying back rent. They're gonna have to start doing all this. People come over to Baldwin Park because it's a cheaper sales tax. You have all the surrounding cities making more money on sales tax. The thing that you need to do is look at how to run the city more efficiently. And there's staff members like your finance director that's making two times the amount that somebody should be making. Plus, she cooked the books, showed illegal amounts of money that should never have been shown in there. There wasn't money there. There's probably, I think, about four million dollars of the weed money. So you know, there's people that need to go, like your city attorney, that's cost this city millions of dollars in lawsuits because of his stupidity, but we still keep him on. I don't know why. I don't know why you guys are keeping a guy on that costs you this much money. Now, this sales tax, these people can't afford another three-quarter of a percent. Now, this is gonna affect car buying. This is gonna affect anything you go to a store and you gotta pay sales tax on. It's gonna affect every business in this city that's struggling right now to pay a sales tax on any item that they buy. It's taxable. Now, do you really think that's fair? You're setting out there giving people credit for rents, but then you're coming in here and saying, okay, we're gonna punish you another way. We're gonna come in and get another three-quarter percent on everything you buy. Well, you know where they're gonna go? They're gonna go over to Chino where I go, seven and three-quarters percent interest or on the sales tax. Don't have to pay it here. This is stupid. You guys need to understand, you need to fix the internal problems here of all the overspending of payroll that you have on people that should have been gone a long time ago. And your finance director and your city attorney are two that need to go right now. And you guys need to look at this. And I know you guys think that, oh, well, we'll just get more money, more money, and we'll tax the people. But that's coming out of your pockets too, the ones that you live here, and you have to live here in order to be on the city council. So remember that when you go to the store, or do you go out of the city and go to a cheaper place to get sales tax?
Your time is up, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Abel. You have to order.
He's right there.
Buenas noches, me llamo Abel. I live in Baldwin Park for forty-five years. I'm a business owner.
Good evening. My name is Abel. I've lived in Baldwin Park for forty-five years. I'm a business owner.
Okay, I just wanted to report that there's water being wasted in Baldwin Park.
I recorded this. There's a pipe. And I called today to the manager. The water is going. And I called the city, and there was no answer.
I also want to thank you. You have been cleaning up the city.
But more needs to be done to clean up more graffiti and areas that are unclean. As soon as things get cleaned up, though, the homeless move in. And we need to do it so that they do not invade right away and dump trash again.
I also want to thank you.
You have been cleaning up the city. But more needs to be done to clean up more graffiti and areas that are unclean. As soon as things get cleaned up, though, the homeless move in. And we need to do it so that they do not invade right away and dump trash again.
I also want to thank you. When I call in for a stolen car or a car that's been junked, I call the police. And I get a lot of questions asked from the dispatcher. And I say, "Why? Just leave it like that, then? If you have to ask me so many questions, why is it necessary?" I just want to report that it's stolen or junked.
I shouldn't have to answer so many questions. It should be up to the police to come and check on it.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Gracias.
Okay, thank you. That's all. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Anybody else looking to speak? If not, I will close public communication. And I think most of those issues were on items that we were talking about today. So I think I can, we'll cover those. But just so you're aware, the water issue, it seems that it'd be more of a Water County Valley issue, depending on the pipes. And then you have Director Galvin reaching out to you right now, who will take care of your question. But other than that, of course, we take water savings very serious here. We're pushing for drought-saving measures to save not only on cost, but also water, as we know that we are going through a major drought. Then, all the other issues I'll talk about later. And then, I know homelessness is an issue that we're facing. It's been an issue for a very, very long time here. I know we don't go back too far in time. But we're working on it, right? And so homelessness is complex. It's difficult. It's a serious issue that goes all the way to the Supreme Court. I don't mind sharing that information with any of you. I'm very open about the aggressive approaches that we have instilled here in the city of Baldwin Park. And very proud to say that we are leading by example. Bigger cities than us are looking to us to see what we're doing. And I'm confident that little by little we'll solve that issue through a multi-pronged approach. Yes, Councilmember Avila?
That's correct. No, not this Saturday. Saturday, sorry. Saturday, the thirtieth. The thirtieth. So those of you that are interested in coming out and helping us clean up the city, I don't have the actual information in front of me. Do you have it, Mayor?
I don't have it on me.
The details, it is on the website. So we're trying to make Baldwin Park beautiful. And this is the first event that the mayor brought up. We're gonna have a cleanup in different areas of the city, and I'm sure it won't be the first one. So aside from our city staff cleaning up, we're also, as community members, will start cleaning up our city to make sure it's beautiful. When it comes to the homeless, you are right, Mayor. We have been striving to help the homeless. We have to remember, these are somebody's brothers, sisters, uncles. We need to respect them. And I understand sometimes they're in places that we don't want to see them. I understand that. There is a law that we need to protect them as well. So in order for us to remove them, we need to make sure that we are respectful and that we are following the law thoroughly. We do have Officer Wenner on the homeless outreach program. He is excellent at reaching out to the homeless, and he does the process correctly. So if they're in a private property or what have you, the owner of the property needs to request that the homeless needs to be removed. I know we see them in parking lots, in sidewalks, different areas in the city, in shopping centers. But the law states that unless the owner of the property requests for them to be removed, we cannot remove them. We do offer them services, and they have been put in different services. But do understand, we need to be respectful. That, again, always think of it this way. Let's not forget, that is somebody's family member that is going through tough times that I hope no one in this audience or anybody in our community goes through. Because it's ugly to see the struggles they are going through. So let's just keep that in mind. We are working with them. We're trying to find facilities for them. And we're trying to help them in the most respectful way. Thank you.
Great, and so very quick, you just brought up a good point. So, everybody's aware, last council meeting, we did give direction for our staff to come together, get some legal partnerships going, and figure out how we can meet our requirements in the case of Martin versus Boise. And then I did see Officer Wenner today. I did mention that to him. So Chief, if PD is able to, and the host team is able to, I'd want the host team to be a part of that meeting as well. And then offer their insight into it. I know that they're very involved, and they're some of the first responders when it comes to homelessness. And then, Sam, I don't know if you want to elaborate on our Keep Baldwin Park Beautiful program. I know that it's coming up rather quickly. And it is a volunteer program. I know that we all strive to keep Baldwin Park clean. We all live here. We all strive to keep Baldwin Park safe, of course, because we all live here. But it's a, I think it's an opportunity for the city for the residents to come out and feel a little bit of civic pride and have a say in what's happening. I know one of our biggest targets on there is gonna be the MetroLink, and trying to beautify that through a community effort.
Yes, Mayor, I just want to echo that. We are currently prepping the site so that we can start our first community cleanup event, which is gonna be held at the MetroLink train station. We're going to be doing some re-landscaping, cleanup. We're bringing drought-tolerant plants and colorful plants. And it should be a good event. And we hope that the community comes out and turns out. And I think we're all gonna have fun and make the city look beautiful.
Now I have the information. Everybody texted to me. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. April thirtieth, it's a Saturday from eight to twelve. So put on your gardening clothes, your working clothes, so we can beautify the city. That's just the beginning of the projects. And I'm think, I know we're gonna be hitting different areas of the city, correct? Thank you. Also, Mayor, I almost forgot. I want to congratulate Officer, our new Officer Beatriz Santiago, correct? We have a new officer on board. Chief, if you wanna speak a little bit about her, we should have had her here today, but...
Yeah, you know, I don't have all the names. We have at least four officers, if I'm correct, that we have out in training right now. Beatriz is one of them. We have it on the website of our recruitment efforts.
I saw Officer Beatriz Santiago on the website. That's why it stood out. So congratulations to her. I'm, hopefully, as soon as they're available, you can bring them to the council meeting so we can present them to the community.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Mayor Protam.
Yeah, I just want to make a quick announcement just to remind our residents that we are going to be having another job fair expo this Saturday, April twenty-third, at the Esther Snyder Community Center from nine AM to one PM. There are over fifty jobs available, and they will be doing interviews on the spot. So just please remind everyone to come out that is looking for a job. Saturday, April twenty-third, at the Esther Snyder Community Center from nine AM to one PM. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Sorry, Sam. I have one more. I know Mr. Total brought up a good point. And so I kind of recall back to 2019 after the elections. Before that, we had a contract that was with two boat-truck operators. And when that, and when we removed one of the franchisees, we used the, we used this section and this statement that they were not meeting our code. So they're not following municipal code. You know, Mr. Total brings up a good point that there may be a contractor that's not following our municipal code, and that's a big issue. So I do want to make sure that we take that serious. We should be holding everybody to a high standard and not picking and choosing, and not picking and choosing where we enforce the law. We had a street vending issue. We forced everybody of those people to follow the law based on health and safety of the community. Unregulated building and construction is a health hazard to the community and the surrounding businesses. Parking where you're not supposed to is also an issue. So if we were able to hold one of our operators to that high standard, I expect others to be held to that high standard as well.
And to add to that, Mayor, code enforcement has been doing an excellent job, as you said, starting with the vendors and parking automobiles or trucks, business trucks, parking in areas that they shouldn't be. Just overall, Ron, if you can let them know that we appreciate all the work they're doing. I know they had to adjust their work hours in order for them to be out during the times that they are most needed. So please let them know that we truly appreciate them being able to adjust the time and being out there and keeping an eye out for our community because it's their community as well. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Great. So at this moment, we do have a consent calendar. We have five items. I'd like to pull item number five. I don't know if there's any other items any council members would like to pull. If not, I'll make a motion to pass items number one through four. Can I get a second? City clerk, can I get a roll call?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Manuel Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandro Avila?
Yes.
Mayor Protam, Daniel Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. So we have item number five, and that's city financial assistance for Baldwin Park Unified School District student field trips American through the American Rescue Plan. So recently, as you know, we had a student go through to New York. That was Kiara. We had her here. We presented her an award. And when I was out there, I thought it was a great idea for Baldwin Park students to be able to travel and experience more than just their community, right? I think it's a beneficial factor in development for our young generation. And it gives them an opportunity to see that their work is paying off. I believe this month or next month, I think the STEM, the STEM team at Holland is actually going out of state for championships. And that's a pretty big deal. I know that we have a lot of organizations. I mean, we just celebrated the wrestling team. We just celebrated the basketball team last meeting. And so it's very important and crucial that we work with our school district to foster our children and give them that opportunity, right? You know, at the end of the day, even though the school district is a different jurisdiction, they take care of Baldwin Park residents. And Baldwin Park residents are Baldwin Park residents, which means that they also fall under our jurisdiction. It's very important that we work with those jurisdictions to make sure that our community has opportunity. I know that this year, I think this year really exacerbated the, put a spotlight on the fact that our children don't have a lot of opportunity, right? And we saw it with as simple things as, you know, having access to internet for school or having those, you know, the necessary resources to grow. And so if they don't even have access to vital things, I know that more than likely, they won't have the resources for programs like this. A program like this lets them explore, see the real world, see something historical, and really just lets their mind expand. And I think that's really important for our community based on our demographics and the opportunities that sometimes cities like ours lack. So I did want to work with our CEO and appropriate sixty thousand dollars of ARPA funds from either side of the sub-funding and subcategories or any other fund. You can use ARPA, or you can use other funding that you may find appropriate, whichever one you, you most appropriate to work out, to work out the specifics on a deal like this. And, but I do want to make sure that one of the, one of the things is that we don't make it based on GPA. I think there's a lot of students who are at risk sometimes and given an opportunity to explore, given an opportunity just in general that otherwise they wouldn't have can really benefit them in a positive manner.
Mayor, I just have a quick question regarding this item.
Okay. Yes, Mayor Protam?
How and who would be selected under these? I mean, because sixty thousand dollars only gets you so far. Are we talking sixty thousand dollars on an annual basis or just a one-time shot? And who would be the people to select? What students would benefit from this if they're not going by GPA? Would it be the sort discretion of the school district? Would it be the city? How would this work?
So I think we can treat this as a pilot program. I mean, it's a first, it's something, you know, it's a first of its kind. It's not something that we've done before. I think that when our CEO meets with the school district, they can work out those kinks. You know, to me, it's just important that we don't base it on GPA because I think that there's a lot of students who would really use that opportunity. And that might be that benefactor that makes them want to work a little bit harder, right? To see what's possible, rather than where they're at. And so I think that's more of an issue that can be talked about long-term, but we can use it for outings. So like I mentioned, it could be exclusively for, you know, the championship outings where they're going out to a big game. I know, so it's really a discretionary issue. I think that we can continue that conversation. So this just approves the discussion and the appropriation. And then our city manager would come back with the detailed specifics, and we can go from there.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Avila.
And you made a very good point, basing it on GPA. As Dr. Salazar knows, there's a lot of students that may not have the best GPA. But it doesn't mean that they're not capable of doing it. They just don't have the means. They just have no idea how to go about even joining a group. Let's put, for example, being part of Color Guard or part of band. They may not have the funds, so they won't even try. So I think working with the school district and the city to figure out how this money would be allocated to those. Because we know the ones that have a good GPA, they already have either some kind of support or they know how to get to where they're at. But I think the challenging part is getting those students that need a little push, that need a little help to get to those trips that they want to go to, to be part of a group in a school that, to them, is just a dream because they can't afford to for whatever the reason. So finding those students that may not have the GPA, would be allocated to those, because we know the ones that have a good GPA, they already have either some kind of support, or they know how to get to where they're at, but I think the challenging part is getting those students that, that need a little push, that need a little help to, to get to those trips that they want to go to, to be part of a group in a school that, uh, and to them is just a dream because they can't afford to for whatever the reason. So finding those, those students, um, that may not have the GPA, but every single student, I think, the way I see it, working in the school district for so many years, is capable of getting somewhere, and if it, if it's up to us to push them and entice them to do that as a school district and as a city, let's push every single student. I know, uh, sixty thousand dollars may not seem a lot, but it will be a lot when we distribute it to those groups of students that never had the possibility of even acquiring any amount of money to attend any, any of those events that they want to attend or be part of a group that they can't be part of because of financial situations or because they don't have the GPA or what have you. So that, that is the key, uh, Mayor, not just focusing on those with the high GPA because I think every single student deserves the opportunity to be part of a group that they dream to be, uh, a group, a part of. Uh, so yeah, that's a great idea, I completely, uh, support that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may? Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
No, thank you, uh, you all raised a great point, um, my suggestion would be is, uh, actually increase it from sixty thousand to maybe eighty thousand or, or even double it to a hundred and twenty. Um, and what I would suggest is we bifurcate this, um, into, you know, half of the money goes towards the individuals that both of you have already talked about. What I would then say is that other half is then allocated for those other student programs, um, that, you know, uh, that are not necessarily field trips, but also require for them to do out-of-town, out-of-region competitions, um, and also exposes them to those other opportunities. So I would say, you know, I don't know if it's called, uh, if we're, if we, if we reference them, and the CEO can certainly figure out what that's called with, uh, the superintendent, whether it's the, uh, school, uh, clubs that are available and so forth, um, or the athletic programs, because there's, uh, as, as we're well aware, they're looking at, uh, you know, closing additional schools in the school district, and, you know, one of the things uh, I'm afraid of is that they will limit, uh, travel, uh, field trips for young individuals, uh, to go to the museums and so forth, so that's where I would say is, half of that money goes towards helps, uh, offset some of those costs that traditional students are, are used to, right? If they're going to Moca or other, uh, venues for educational purposes, and then the other half would be for these other groups, um, or individuals, uh, not necessarily based on the GPA, um, but also provide them the other opportunities to go, uh, explore, um, as it's tied to their education, uh, aim and goals. So that would be my friendly, uh, suggestion or amendment to, uh, this item that we have here for number two.
Yeah, I think that's great, so definitely, if we're, if we're, if the council's willing, I, I, I would love to up the amount to a hundred and twenty thousand, and so yeah, so it's, it's any sort of outing, whether it's a field trip or an out-of-state thing, I know, um, you know, when I was in band, as far as I could ever get was like an hour or two away, and then people in Covina were going all the way to Las Vegas, so I was like, you know, but, but, so I want to make sure that, you know, children in our area now have that opportunity as well to just go as far as them and, and get that opportunity, right? That's an opportunity that you're not going to get ever again as you get older, so yeah, I, I agree, I think a hundred and twenty thousand dollars is, is, is great. Chief, uh, chief, chief executive officer.
Right.
CEO, city manager, uh, while you have, so, yeah, so a hundred and twenty thousand will, um, ARPA funds, any subcategory which you, which you deem is appropriate for this, and then, uh, that'll be my motion.
Mayor, before we, before we take a motion on it, I, I do agree with Mayor Protem Damian, uh, his question about, you know, is this a one-time allocation? Is this going to be an ongoing annual allocation? It's important that those expectations are set early on because a hundred and twenty thousand is pretty significant, and I'm sure that, you know, we could fund senior, uh, trips, and, you know, I'm talking about senior citizen trips, and our Pride Platoon program, you know, and support, further support our domestic violence advocate program with, you know, the, the monies that we're talking about, so I just want to know what is the long-term plan here? Is it going to be an annual allocation? And if so, d- does our finance director need to chime in? Because, you know, I think that we got worried about, uh, having a hundred and forty-five thousand dollar surplus at the end of this fiscal year, so it is a significant amount, and I know that these are ARP funds, so they're, you know, very specific, but my question again comes back to, is this a one-time allocation? Or are we creating a commitment like we do for this, the crossing guards where the city basically is on the hook for three hundred thousand dollars to make sure that our kids are walking to school safely?
Yeah.
So that's my question.
Yeah, and that's a great question, so we don't have to pick and choose, and I don't think it has to be us versus them. Uh, senior, senior, seniors have actually received a, a major funding this year, and that's because we funded free services for youth and senior service programs, so I believe the seniors just actually went to the Ronald Reagan Library, um, so that's a good thing. You know, I, I think this is a great conversation, I personally don't agree that it's coming up when we're doing something positive for the community in partnership with the school district, I think this could, this conversation can happen any other time, um, but, uh, we're making sure that we do all of that. We've funded our, we're funding our police department to make sure that they're, they, they're working in construction with our, uh, school district, we're funding senior services, we're funding youth services, um, and then because it is ARPA, it will not affect the general fund budget, so you will not see a deficit there because of these, uh, dollars. So I think that it is, uh, a good idea to make this a pilot program, see how it works this year, and if we're able to lock in, um, if we're able to lock in funding, um, on an annual basis or long-term, then we can do that once we see how it works out the first time. I believe I also gave direction earlier to our city staff to look at a community benefits fund, so that is another possibility there as to how we can fund and create these types of opportunities for our students, um, in general. So, you know, a lot of times we talk about safety, and safety goes beyond just, uh, funding our police, it goes, uh, to the preventive measures, and I think that this is one of them where we give them an opportunity before somebody else gives them a less beneficial opportunity to all of us. So there is, there is a motion on the floor, so city clerk, roll call please.
Mayor, really quick, if I may?
Yes, Mayor Protem.
Yeah, no, and I'm in full support of this, uh, you know, and, and of course, it's not an us versus them type of deal, uh, my only, my only reason for the question was because we are allocating ARPA funds, and the ARPA funds are temporary, uh, solution for us, right? Uh, we receive temporary funds for the next two years, so did the school district, um, obviously we want to invest in our youth, I've always said that I believe that we've failed our youth because we have not made the investments, and I say we as a city and as a school district, because, you know, we need to invest more in our youth, our youth sports and our programs, and I'm a hundred percent on board, uh, with supporting this. The reason why I asked if this was going to be on an annual basis is because if it is, if this is the case, then we need to start figuring out a way how we're going to allocate this type of funding into our budget, uh, because then we will have to look for other source of funding this, whether it's our general fund or any other type of funds that we have available, because the ARPA is only temporary, um, and a great, again, this is a great, a great, uh, you know, item, I do fully support it, but we just need to figure out, you know, how we're going to continue future funding, uh, for this program, that was the reason for me asking if this was, uh, a one-time shot or an annual thing.
Oh yeah, of course, and I understand that portion, so, um, like I said, I know that funding from ARPA is temporary, but it's also a, uh, one of a kind of opportunity, so we want to make the most of it, so we can treat it as a pilot program. If we see that it works, that it's successful, and that, uh, we're both comfortable continuing it, then we can, uh, worry about a long-term discussion on how we can fund it, uh, for the long-term, and I think that that opens up discussions for, for more funding, for more programs, and, but I think, again, like, that's a, that's going to be a, a longer discussion with, with, uh, more conversation and, and more details as we move away from ARPA.
Mayor, in, in technical terms, we're proposing it as a one-time program, uh, to be able to continue beyond this one-time would require further action by the council as the mayor indicated, so we believe we're going to make this be so successful that you're going to want us to find funding to continue it.
Great, thank you for that, so city clerk, there is a motion on the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Manuel Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandro Avila?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Daniel Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great.
Mayor, let's get the STEM team invited up here, maybe for the next meeting.
So, Dr. Salazar, can you help us connect with them?
All right. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, we did have an urgency item that came up after the agenda was posted, uh, I would like to bring that to the attention of the council and see if you'd want to vote on that now. The item is the approval of military equipment and ordinance and policy, uh, this is for the police department. The basis for the, um, urgency is that it, it, uh, there is a, a deadline of May first upon which we need to initiate this process, this is the last council meeting before May first, and, uh, there was, um, some, uh, did not come up until after the agenda was already posted. Also want to really, uh, thank Lieutenant, uh, Joshua Hendricks for, uh, the work he did putting this together, it was a lot of work, he did a lot of research and really assisted in, um, making sure this got to, uh, the agenda in a timely way. Uh, this is going to be an urgency item, it would take a four-fifths vote, Mr. Mayor, a- and it will need a public hearing, so it should be added to the agenda as Agenda Item Six A.
Okay, and it goes under the public hearing, correct?
Yes, sir.
Right, so I'll make a motion to add the urgency item, um, did you need me to read it by name?
To read that, uh, ordinance by title, waive reading of, or the reading.
All right. So where's, okay.
And the, the
So, by title, so I'll make a motion to add on an emergency basis to our public hearing under Item Six A, uh, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Ballon Park, California, adopting police department policy number seven zero six in accordance with Assembly Bill four eight one.
And waive for the reading of the ordinance.
And waive for the reading of, reading of the ordinance, can I get a second? City clerk, roll call please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Manuel Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandro Avila?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Daniel Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So that item's now been added to the agenda as Item Six A for the record, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you for that, and then, so who can give us an update on it? So, it's, uh, it's to obtain approval from, for the applicable governing body, so as the adoption of a military equipment use policy by ordinance prior to the LEA funding, so acquiring or using military equipment, um, so Great, okay, so we do have Lieutenant Hendricks with us.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council, executive staff, members in the council tonight, I'm, I'm up here on behalf of the Excuse me, I'm up here on behalf of the city of Ballon Park PD as well as, uh, the Chief Robert Lopez to give a brief, uh, background in regards to the military equipment, um, policy and ordinance needed, as well as an understanding of Assembly Bill four eighty-one that was recently signed into legislation.
Go ahead and get the next slide, please.
Um, on September thirtieth of twenty twenty-one, Governor Newsom signed Assembly Bill four eighty-one, which became effective this year on January first. AB four eighty-one stated goals are to provide legally enforceable safeguards to protect the public's welfare, safety, civil rights and civil liberties before military equipment or what's been deemed to be military equipment is, uh, funded, acquired or used by any city, PD or county sheriff's department. A little bit about the background is AB four eighty-one, um, was codified under California Government Codes seven seventy through seven seventy-five, and basically it requires each law enforcement agency to obtain approval before a governing body, in this case, the city council, um, by adoption of a military equipment use policy, uh, ordinance at a regular city, uh, council meeting held pursuant to the specific laws, and again, it relates to any funding, acquisition, meaning new acquisition, or to keep in, uh, existence our current, uh, military equipment that we have. So what this is, is this requires, uh, I'm sorry, um, it further states that we need to identify any risks of potential adverse impacts on the public's welfare, safety, civil rights or civil liberties, including on marginalized communities that experience disproportionate rates of police killings and higher rates of military equipment deployed, and, and that we acknowledge that those risks of those impacts and we need to avoid them proactively. It also requires that no later than May first, as the, uh, city attorney stated, that any law enforcement agency seeking to continue the use of this military equipment, um, they need to have this approved through the city council process.
And go to the next slide? So, I'm sorry.
I didn't realize you were already on the slide, if you can go back to that, slide three, please. So, what qualifies as military equipment? So if we look at the list up here, we'll see certain things as unmanned aerial drones or ground vehicles, so for a ground vehicle, uh, like the city, we have what's called a robot, um, it talks about armored personnel carriers, but really that's a, that's more of a military term, this term is referring to the department's, uh, rescue vehicle that is used in critical incidents for officer down, citizen rescues, or it provides extra protection for our SWAT team during critical incidents. It talks about any specialized firearms, less than fifty cal, just for the record, the city of Ballon Park does not have any fifty-cal, um, rifles, um, but we do have what has been categorized as, as our AR fifteen platform-style rifles that are used on patrol as well as with our special response or our special weapons and tactics team. Um, flash, light, sound diversionary devices, um, these are typically referred to as flash bangs, or their, their technical term is NFDDs, these are used as distractionary devices that gives an advantage to our, our SWAT team during critical incidents. Explosive breaching tools, the city of Ballon Park does not use those, we have just, uh, manual breaching tools as well as a breaching shotgun. Tear gas could be used as far as for barricaded subjects as well as riot control if needed and approved by, uh, a commander, or, excuse me, a lieutenant or higher, same with forty millimeter projectile launchers, um, these can be used for hostile individuals and be used as, um, less lethal tactics to, to sort of, uh, resolve, um, critical situations, same with the beanbag shotgun. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so some of the requirements that were needed to be met is, uh, we needed to have this posted by thirty days prior to the city council, and we did that, so we posted on the city website as well as the PD website, both the policy and our current equipment in use, and we also had, needed to make notification on a, uh, I believe it was termed a, a printed newspaper still, uh, which we met our requirement as well, I worked with the city attorney as well as the, uh, city clerk for the city of Ballon Park, and we accomplished these, um, these required, uh, steps. It also, uh, governs the use and reporting of military equipment as I've already specified, and then it just talks about the, the items needed in Government Code Section seven seventy. Um, so part of why we're here is, um, we need to have a policy that this equipment now be, now deemed by the assembly as military equipment, um, that we just need to get it approved, and, and that's what I'm here to do, so I'm also here to answer any questions that you might have, so next slide, please. Um, and then the next couple of slides are just going to go through some of, like I said, the military equipment that has been deemed by the, uh, assembly as military equipment, so, um, these are just some examples of what the, what has been deemed military equipment and the specific law enforcement use or best practices out there for industry standards that we have in play. So drones are typically used for crowd monitoring, uh, reconnaissance during critical incidents and area searches for critically missing people or, um, people we're trying to locate. Uh, what's commonly referred to as a robot is just a, uh, a, a, a ground robot that can be deployed via remote control, um, and we use those in high-risk enclosure areas for barricaded subjects or, or, um, prior to our SWAT team making entry for critical incidents or on high-risk search warrants. Um, and they, they move potentially to, to find the hazard if there is any, and it protects our officers, and it's a first level of, of, um, visual that we can get once inside the house. It can also be used to communicate via its mic and, and through the remotes to communicate with the individuals, um, that are located within. Uh, next slide, please. Tear gas, and this is a, uh, ion respiratory irritant that can be used, um, when, when needed or when authorized, and it's usually deployed, uh, to force surrender of barricaded subjects, and it's a safe alternative to officers having to actually go hands-on and engage with dangerous, um, individuals or in a dangerous environment. Uh, the forty-millimeter projectile launchers which we currently have and the beanbag shotguns have also been deemed to fall into the military equipment, um, heading, um, these have currently been in use by the city of Ballon Park for over twenty years, and they're deployed from a greater distance which gives officers, uh, more safety and more time to react, and it offers increased safety for, for quite honestly, both the, the officers and the individual involved. It's proven efficient, it's an alternative option to lethal force as mentioned, um, when reasonable, and it also allows for hopefully the surrender of violent subjects with minimal injury. So, next slide, please. Um, and just in conclusion, I'd like to recap what the slide is showing before us, that this, these items deemed in the military equipment by Assembly Bill four eighty-one have been in use, they are, um, components that have been deemed by law enforcement agencies, not only in California but across the nation, as being used for overall best practices. The lack of these tools, if this does not get passed by the city council, will greatly, it will significantly inhibit, um, our ability to safeguard the public's welfare and will, um, subject officers and the citizens to unnecessary harm. And finally, many of these tools have already been proven to be effective alternatives, um, instead of using lethal force and are an integral part of the preservation of life. So, and with that, thank you very much for your time. I don't know if I should stay here for questions from the audience or from yourselves.
So, if any council members have any questions?
Yes, I do.
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, appreciate it, uh, Lieutenant, uh, again, thank you very much for the presentation, uh, my only comment would be is, uh, this is a good, uh, deck, uh, slide deck, um, I would also just share that also on our website, just so people understand, you know, what we have and what we don't have, um, in case they, you know, they're not listening to what's happening today. Um, and I certainly support, uh, you know, the less lethal, uh, you know, use of tools of, not only for the residents, um, or for the individual that we're, uh, in, interacting, but also for officer safety, so thank you very much for this and appreciate it.
Thank you, council member, and, um, included with the policy is an actual list of all the military equipment in, in current procurement by the, I'm sorry, by the Ballon Park Police Department, so that is also listed, and thank you for mentioning that both on the city website, um, on this agenda item that was up there as well as the police website as well.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Avila.
Thank you for the presentation, it's obviously very important that we have, uh, this, uh, military equipment for our police department, as you said, for the safety of our officers as well as the community members, but I just have a, a question, you said we've already, we're already using the, the launchers and the beanbag shotgun, we're using that already?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Do you have an idea about how often these are being used here in the city of Ballon Park?
I don't have, uh, any data with me tonight, I know the numbers, um, are low, I would, I would not want to, you know, do any disservice to this by just arbitrarily pulling numbers out of my head, but it's something I can get to you very quickly if needed.
Okay, I, I would just like that information, um, I know our police department is very cautious and is very careful on the way they, you treat our residents, so I know for a fact these will not be used unless extremely necessary, so I just want the public to know on the safety, uh, cautions that you take when, when you do have to use, uh, this type of equipment for whatever the reason that it needs to be done, um, when you do have to use it, who you said, who is going to give the directive to use this equipment?
So if it's a controlled scenario, meaning the SWAT team has been called out, um, for the critical incident, be it a barricaded subject, a hostage rescue sort of scenario or any critical incident, it would be the SWAT commander, which currently is myself, um, I've spoken with the chief of police as far as authorization on a patrol level, if the SWAT team isn't there, and this is a, you know, a happenstance or a, a now sort of incident where there's just a sergeant and a watch commander in the field, um, and the authorization will be given to a lieutenant or higher needs to make that call.
Okay, thank you for that, I appreciate it, and I'm definitely in support of this.
Great. Great. So if there is no more questions, I'll make a motion.
We just need to open up the public hearing, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, you're right, correct. So if there's no more questions, I will officially open the public hearing for anybody looking to speak in favor of, of the ordinance, to be in accordance with Assembly Bill 481. And I will officially open the public hearing for anybody looking to speak in opposition of the bill, to be in compliance and accordance with Assembly Bill 481. Looking that nobody's looking to speak, I will officially close the public hearing, and I will make a motion to pass, to introduce verse, reading only, an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ballon Park, California, Adopting Police Department Policy Number 706 in accordance with Assembly Bill 481."
Second?
All right. And then so we have a second. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Manuel Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandro Avila?
Yes.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you for that, City Clerk. And then next, we do have a request to the City Council from the Planning Commission to approve Development Agreement 19-03, to allow the construction of a double-faced LED digital billboard, location 1529 Virginia Avenue, and the applicant is Lamar of Los Angeles, case number DA 19-03. We do have a public hearing, so I will officially open the public hearing to anybody looking to speak in favor of item number six. Looking that nobody is looking to speak, I will officially open the, oh, we have Mr.
It's been a long time since Lamar has been in here and doing signs, only because the other sign company paid Pacheco a lot of money to get their signs in. So I'm kind of leery with this. And Lamar, I just want to know with their contract that they're going to have with the city, if they're going to be doing community signage on there, that the community will be getting benefits out of that. So I want to make sure that they're doing the same as the other sign company had to do, and that we get a benefit out of that sign being there. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Great, thank you for that. That is a good question. All right, so.
Yeah, we can, we can answer that.
Let me just close the. Then anybody looking to speak in opposition to item number six in the public hearing, now is your time. Looking, or seeing that nobody is looking to speak, I will officially close both public communications, both public hearings in favor and in opposition, and I'll hand it over to our City Manager, who can answer those questions.
Yes, Mr. Tuttle, a great point. And yes, there is a PSA provision in the contract whereby they make the space available for city purposes, organizations on behalf, requested on their behalf by the city. So that's in the contract.
Great, thank you for that. And I think that's, that was a really good question. So if councilmembers have any questions or concerns, if not, I will make a motion to pass Adopt Resolution 2022-017, entitled, "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Ballon Park, recommending that the City Council to approve one and an initial study and mitigate a negative declaration of environmental impact report and Development Agreement 19-033, to permit the construction of a double-faced LED digital billboard within the IC." Can I get a second? City Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Manuel Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandro Avila?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you for that, City Clerk. We move to our reports of officers, and that is approved 4th of July Spectacular Show Budget and Award of Agreement with Pyro Spectacular, Inc. I think one of the biggest questions we have is selecting a date, whether Saturday, July 2nd, or Sunday, July 3rd. I think based on the timeline, and keeping in mind that our neighboring city of La Puente will be looking to host a fireworks show on July 3rd, which I think is normally their thing. You might not want to compete with them, and I think it might be best to hold it on Saturday. I think Saturday might be a little bit better, just because it is the beginning of the weekend. But I definitely want to hear what council is thinking.
Do we have a sense of the others, other cities, neighboring ones? Because really, it does, I mean, in the sense of La Puente, you know, this is far residence. I don't think there's necessarily people going over there to go watch their 4th of July, if we're having one on, on Sunday, because it's always the best. That I do know.
Yeah, so.
But do we have a sense of what's going on in the other cities, like on Saturday?
I don't know of the, I don't know what they're doing. I just know that.
Um, excuse me, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, most of the other cities do have it on the actual 4th of July, the ones that do have. The only one that does have it on July 3rd is La Puente.
And are we doing it on the 4th, on the 3rd or 2nd? 3rd or 2nd, is that because they're, the pyrotech folks are not available on the 4th?
That is correct.
Okay, so it's just, this is just a one-time thing that we're doing?
If council chooses.
Yes. I'm supportive either day. I think Saturday would probably makes the most sense, but truth be told, I would all, I would certainly support that we keep this on the 4th for the following years. Yep, that makes sense.
I, I agree. I think the 3rd, I think the 4th is the best date, but since we don't have it, I don't know, I'm kind of leaning more towards the 3rd, only because it's, I mean, everybody pretty much will be off Monday, the 4th. It's a lot closer to, you know, it's closer to the 4th, but I don't know, whatever your guys' recommendations may be.
And if we have it late enough in the night, we can technically go into the 4th and have it be on the, on the actual 4th.
Yeah, so keeping in mind that fortunately, not everybody has July 4th off, you know, but yeah, so, so I don't know what else, everybody else thinking, councilmembers? We can do Saturday, and I think that's better for us. Yeah. So I think you need that, and then what else is there to need? And then we just approve the budget. So I think we'd approve the budget, so make a motion to approve the budget and direct staff for Saturday, July 2nd. Can I get a, okay. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Manuel Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandro Avila?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you for that. And then, of course, we have the sales tax proposal, which is a very important topic. So before I make a comment on it, City Manager, do you want to just tell us what we'd be approving today?
Thank you, Mayor. We, we are asking for a number of green light activities to take place, none of them yet is asking for actual approval of moving forward with it placing it on the ballot. That, that, depending on how the process proceeds, that is to be presented with the City Council at a subsequent meeting. So this is one of the most important pieces right now, is, is that much of this discussion, if not all of it, has been an internal discussion, meaning we, in February, had just a conceptual presentation to the City Council. Subsequently, we have had a number of discussions internally with the executive team and our consultants, and, but all of that has been devoid of the real discussion, and that is with the residents of the city. And so what we're asking is that you all bless us to proceed on to a public engagement phase, in which we will then now be meeting with members of the public, organization, business associations, individual businesses. We're also asking that you approve me to assemble a, an advisory committee that would be led, co-chair by two members of the City Council, and then a, a number of residents or business owners from the city that will make up the advisory committee, that will help us guide the discussion with the public, as well as should this move forward, then in setting prioritization of potential areas of investment. We would also, we're asking that you direct us to finalize the results of a polling that we began conducting a week ago or so. That's going to be happening in the next two weeks. This is a telephone poll, and we will compile the results of the poll, and we would want to bring those back to present to the City Council. But the most important ask that we're asking today is that you greenlight us to begin a public engagement, period.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you again, staff and reagan and all that, all those that worked on this. I'm quite excited about the, the process more than the, the tax itself, but I believe that this is the right way to do this. You know, providing input from the community, making them aware of, you know, what this means for them and for the business community. Having an advisory committee makes sense. The one thing I would say is, you know, as we're going through this process, at any time, the, the county could also implement their own tax, tax, tax on our city, to make up for the difference, in which the city itself would not benefit from that revenue. The county would, in turns, we would too, but again, that would all go towards the county. What we're looking at here is perhaps understanding what the needs are and how we can perhaps allocate some of this funding, to some degree, of course. Because one of the discussions that I've also mentioned in the past, and I'm hoping that between now and by the time we move a little bit further on this, is if we could perhaps, you know, if the voters were to, if the voters choose to, to approve something like this, could we delay the actual collection until a year or six months, or whatever, whatever that timeframe might be? So what it does is, it protects the city, but it also protects our residents to ensure that they are the beneficiaries of any increase. I know I haven't received input on that just yet, but I think that's a more legality issue. But this is a, a process in which I think, you know, certainly could assist our community, because one of the discussions that we've also talked about is allocating this, or putting it in a, in a safety box, where it's allocated towards a certain program or department, or whatever the case may be, versus the general funds as an option to. So having the, the folks in the community, community groups, the neighborhood groups, residents, and understand, at least understand that on the front end, will provide us a better understanding as to what we ultimately do with this later in the fiscal, later in the year. So thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Avila.
Thank you for that explanation, Councilmember Hernandez. You're absolutely right. We need to make sure the community understands that basically, pretty much, if we don't do this first, we won't benefit. It's for the county that will benefit. I think that's why these meetings are so important, to make sure, to explain it to our community, and ultimately, they will make the decision of whether it will be put on the ballot. It's not a decision that we're making. We're, we will be presenting the pros and cons of doing this, and hopefully, we have a lot of community input. And again, you will decide whether it will be put on the ballot or not, based on the information given to you. So it's very important the community understands. It will be your decision, based on all the information we give to you, on how the tax proposal goes and how it works. If the, if the county proposes it first, we, as a city, lose in the, because they will have a say-so. So that's why we're trying to get a step ahead, to try to see if we can propose it first. But again, it will be up to you, so I'm looking forward to those discussions, discussions. They are very important for our community to understand, and for all of us to understand too, so we can see how that bill, how that tax initiative will work. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And I agree, I think it's important that the community is involved. I know that it's a hot topic, especially as we try to come out of a pandemic, and I, I do agree, right, with some of those, some of those issues that some of the residents brought up, that it may or may not be the right time, but obviously, we want to hear from the residents and go from there. You know, it's, it's, it's a difficult position, I think, that the city is in, where, you know, we have to not only worry about the city, but also the people that work here and the development that we've, that we need to make, and that we need to strive for. You know, and so at the end of the day, it's, it's really a benefit, looking to benefit, you know, not individuals or the community, or the city itself, but the residents and the people that work here. I think when we approve the, the raise for Parks and Recs staff that was on minimum wage, that was the first raise they've ever received, or that's been approved past minimum wage. And so when you have staff here that take care of vital services, and they take care of programs and things that benefit the city, and they're making less money than they could be making working at a burger joint, it's, it's not only embarrassing, it's kind of, it's challenging, right? Because then we're not able to retain people, especially in a market like this. So that's one of the biggest issues that we have to look at, how we take care of our employees, and it's something that the revenue can help with. Also bringing in services, programs, we just talked about wanting to work with the school district and making sure that our children have opportunities and, and room for growth, regardless of where they live in, or regardless of what zip code they live in. So it is a, a very difficult discussion to have, but it's an important one to have. I definitely want to hear from the community and see what they would, how they feel about a tax, and what they would want to see that money go to. I, I want to echo that sentiment, where I don't want, I wouldn't want this money to just go to the general fund, and then it gets, kind of blends in, it gets washed away, and we don't really see an actual return from it. I'd want the community to have a say in how we, it gets allocated, and, and what we do for it, and also be able to show something for it. That's the whole point of the tax, so just wanted to comment that. So do any other councilmembers have any questions, comments, or concerns?
If I could just piggyback off everything my colleagues have already said, unless there's others first, I'll, I'll give to the other councilmembers. Again, as we're talking about this, you know, as, as you just eloquently talked about, Mr. Mayor, you know, if it is dedicated to, you know, certain programs or certain funding streams, that does then require a higher, I believe, a three, a higher percentage of approval from the voters. So we just have to, you know, as we're going out in the community, we got to make sure that we're, you know, they, they understand that, that it requires more votes to lock that in. And then the other thing, of, of course, of, of great concern to me is, if the voters or if our community decides not to do this, the county can still do this, either this year or next year, regardless of what we decide. And again, the loss of revenue, the loss of opportunities for our community are dramatic. So I just, we just need to make sure that as staff is creating that narrative and providing the facts that, you know, we keep that high on the, on the target of our outreach and our messaging, because, you know, if people just hear about a tax without the context in the, of what the county could also do, I think that changes folks, as least as I've been speaking with folks over the last month or so around this particular issue, they tend to, you know, gravitate, gravitate towards taxing themselves, because they want to see the, the benefit, whatever that might be. Thank you.
Mayor, another important thing to keep in mind is, the estimate revenue is about $6 million. So if we allow the county to tax us first, they will have that $6 million revenue. However, if as a city we vote for this tax, then we would benefit. So that's very important to understand. Would we rather have the county take the $6 million, or keep it within our city? So that's a study that we're, that we're doing. Again, it will be presented in detail to the community, so it could be understood, and if there's any questions or clarifications, that would happen during those meetings.
Great, thank you. So I will make a motion to pass item number eight, and authorize that. And we do have a second, so City Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Manuel Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandro Avila?
Yes.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you for that, City Clerk. And then so going back to page three, we did miss City Council acting as a successor agency of the Dissolved Community Development Commission, and we do have a consent calendar, so I will make a motion to pass that consent calendar. Can I get a second? City Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Manuel Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandro Avila?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you for that, City Clerk. And then next, we do have a fiscal year 2021, 2022 mid-year budget presentation, and I'll hand it over to our Finance Director.
Yes?
Yes. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council and residents of the City of Bowen Park. My name is Rose Tam. I'm the Finance Director for the City of Bowen Park. Tonight, I'm going to provide you the mid-year budget review and year-end projection for fiscal year 2021 and 22. I'm going to give you an overview of general fund operating update. And we, we projected to have a total estimate increase of 1.7 million from the revenue. And also, we are projected to have about 1.7 million expenditure increase also that give us a net increase in the total revenue of $6,000. Next, please. I'm going to give you a little bit more breakdown on the revenue projections. We continue to see increase in property tax, sales tax, and friend, uh, business license fee, license and permits. However, we still see impact from the COVID. We continue seeing decrease in parking citations. And also, we removed the about 1 million dollars from sale of property. And we also see decrease in charges and services. And that's mainly from the uncorrected cannabis fees. We also see a maintenance decrease, as I mentioned earlier, that's from sale of property tax. And we also see about 1.2 million increase from the transfer. That's from the reimbursement that we projected to receive from Be Proud that we previously transferred 1.8 million over to subsidize the shortage. Good news is we are going to expect to receive the same amount that we transferred to Be Proud previously because we have the sale of energy contract. Any questions on the revenue slide?
So you're, you're including the money that we use for Be Proud and then, so does this include any and every cost that we're still expecting from Be Proud? Or is there going to be more and then it would just jump to the next budget, maybe the next fiscal year?
We are going to expect to receive more back from Be Proud with other related costs that incur from, for example, future general fund. And also, I mean, future development fund and general fund.
Okay.
In the next fiscal year, I will include that. Next slide, please. This is the overview of the general fund expenditure. We projected about over half million decrease in personnel costs. That's mainly due from the unfilled vacancy positions. Most of them are from PD and recreation. And we also see increase in maintenance costs. And I, I will explain those and show more details in the next slide. And we also see internal charges increase that is from the reallocation of the internal service fund from the community enhancement portion that was, that is previously budgeted under the CDBG fund.
Rose, really quick before you move forward on that?
Yes.
Internal charges that you said that we had an increase. So was the community enhancement being paid out of CDBG funds?
Yes, they were previously budgeted under the CDBG fund for a portion of the cost that are from the enforcement, uh, community enhancement officer portion.
So why, why is there a decrease? Are we now using general fund to cover that?
Yes, I believe Ron can further explain that to you. And with that, in the next slide, you will also see about 125, about $100,000 for personnel costs that we allocated to the general fund from the CDBG fund also.
Did we lose funding from CDBG for this? Or why is it that we're no longer able to cover this 124,000 out of the CDBG? And now having to cover it out of the general fund?
We did not really lose the funding and had allocate certain funds to the city for different category and area. However, due to the, um, house monitoring and finding, and we temporarily cannot be use the CDBG funding to cover our community enhancements portion.
Councilmember Damian, this is Enrique, City Manager. And so we believe this is a temporary deferral of funding. As the Finance Director indicated, there was a, a monitoring, a report that CDBG, essentially, we had been charging salaries for our code enforcement categorically against CDBG. And, you know, there were questions as to whether they were, in fact, always doing CDBG eligible work. So rather than run the risk of being found in some sort of non-compliance, we are deferring the charge back. But Ron, we expect all of it to be restored. We just got to be able to quantify how we keep track of the code enforcement officers to ensure that they're doing CDBG eligible work.
Got it. So, okay, so we, okay, so we should have never been really covering the entire salary from the CDBG funds to begin with. And this was probably part of the findings in that report that we had to report back to HUD?
Actually, we did not
That's correct.
charge the entire portion. It's all, it's only partial portion of our code enforcement officers' personnel costs.
Got it. Okay. So we just got to make sure that we're, okay.
Yes. Also, Mayor Pro Tem Damian, as part of, in addition to what the Finance Director and Enrique mentioned, this is all part of the annual action plan that the council approved for consulting services. So this is all interrelated. We are in the, we've responded to HUD in that we are working and putting together a comprehensive plan to respond to HUD's monitoring finding that they provided. So the next step is submitting it to HUD for approval. And then at that point, once it's approved, we can then begin to draw down from CDBG once we make that finding. And then the funds that Rose mentioned, we would not be, because it does take some time, we would be able to draw down from, uh, in the future. So we've reached out to our HUD consultant. And as Enrique mentioned, we will be able to recoup that money in the future.
Mayor Pro Tem, as I understand it, the real reason is we didn't properly document what the code enforcement officers were doing. So therefore, rather than fight about it and being found out of compliance, there just needs to be better documentation in this next coming year. And then we'll be able to charge all of those funds again, the portion that we did. It wasn't all charged, but the portion that we did charge, we couldn't prove with documentary evidence that we did. So that's why we decided at that time to forego that. But all it is, is a matter of documenting in the coming year and we'll get it all back again.
Got it. Thank you for clarifying that. So basically, bottom line is we just need a better oversight from CDBG funds. Correct?
Yes. And that's a, just a comprehensive plan for how we operate CDBG in relation to code enforcement.
Thank you.
Next slide, please. I'm going to provide you breakdown for each department. This slide is for the administration, oh, sorry. This slide showing the overview of increase or decrease by departments. And I'm going to show a little bit more information and breakdown for each department's increase or decrease. Next, please. From the administration, we have small increase from outside printing. As you may see, under the justification is mainly for the purchase of the new proclamation and covers. And then we also have a estimated $100,000 there to set aside for the staff augmentation support. We have small increase due to miscellaneous litigation. And we also have a small decrease due to the vacancy of a certain position from admin. And because of the vacancy, we have some increase to fill that vacancy from the part-time pay. And we also have increase for the compensation survey study from a consulting firm. And then we have also increase for additional funds needed for pre-employment related costs. And then we have a small, about $4,700 for other miscellaneous increases that I don't list them out due to the limited time we have. And I will have all the detailed line items posted on the city's website after this mid-year review is completed. Any question on the admin slide?
Yes, I have a few.
Yes.
Quick clarification on outside printing. Is this, is this for, are we printing something else? What are we printing outside, first and foremost, if I could ask?
It's for
Oh, please.
For like some plaque and certificates that we hang out to, for example, to the school or to certain events.
Okay. So my, my thing would be is it's not necessarily requested by the mayor, but this is on behalf of the city council, correct? That how it should be? Okay. I appreciate it. If you could just change that, that'd be great. The other item here is under Cordova for stag, staff augmentation. This is probably, and there's also another item, I think, in finance or, sorry, there's a, there's another $150,000 in staff augmentation. How much staff are we saving by going this route? Are we saving by three or four staff members or five? Or what would that look like?
So the Cordoba staff augmentation is intended to be a short, temporary, no more than a year. So in terms of, you know, we needed to activate that quickly. That was the premise by which we did that. But, you know, it's not intended to be a long engagement.
Perfect. And that, this 100,000 will go into next fiscal year? Or we, are we adding additional money for, to cover next fiscal year or this will cover?
So the idea, it would be through December, so it would, there will be some in next fiscal year.
So what would, what would be the total cost that we're looking at?
Total would be 200,000.
Okay. In next fiscal year's budget, it'll be another 200,000?
Another 100,000.
Another 100,000. Okay. So the total for the 150, the 200, because we have right now 250,000 for this current fiscal year, between now and December, excuse me, June 30th. And then we're going to add another 100,000 to next year's fiscal year budget.
Correct.
Okay. No, thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Next slide, please. For the community development and you see legal services increase is mainly due to the projected legal costs related to the cannabis matter. And then we also have a 30,000 decrease due to the resignation of staff, a temporary saving of $30,000. And then you also see a list of requests or reallocation of community enhancement fund from CDBG to general fund. And we already explained that items earlier. Then you also see all other increases for about, yes?
Rose, I'm sorry to interrupt. Really quick.
Yes.
So on this page here, this slide that you're showing here, so all of these adjustments are also, basically, we had, so it wasn't just salary and benefits, it was also internal service charge insurance, information and support, lease expenses. These were all things that were paid out of the CDBG that were now allocated from the general fund?
Yes. It's, the total is about 125,000. And as I mentioned, it's not the full charge for the code enforcement or community enhancement division. It's only a small portion that the city used to allocate to them because they do go out there to do inspection to the low income or low income housing units. Just like the city attorney mentioned.
Yeah.
And city manager and Ron mentioned, we, the city just need to put a policy together and have all the code enforcement officer keep track of the time that they spend in that areas.
Got it. Okay, so there was more?
Then we can provide supporting documents to recoup the costs.
So if in the future, we keep better records of the community enhancement and what, what calls are going to, we can offset some of this revenue, this income from the general fund and get it back from the CDBG as long as we are, number one, in compliance and number two, making sure we're documenting this properly, correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Perfect. Thank you, Rose.
You're welcome. The other increases for about $36,000 are mainly due to resignation of staff payouts. This complete the projection for community development department. Next, please. And this slide will show you the increase or decrease from finance department. Finance department have about fifty-five thousand decrease from the vacancy of the temporary vacancies of the accounting manager positions. Also, the unfilled finance intern position, we have a saving about twenty-five thousand dollars. And because of these vacancies, and we have projected about nine thousand six hundred increase in overtime. However, the savings will have more than enough cover these increases. And you also see the twenty-five thousand increase, as I mentioned, due to resignation and the annual payout of all different leaves, such as the admin, holiday, sick leave payout. And we also have about sixteen thousand increase to the attic fee and other minor services. Some of them are relate to some major funds added to the city, such as the B-Power Funds and R-Power Funds, which require more hours from the Citywide's annual attic. Then, we have about seven, I mean, six thousand seven hundred miscellaneous increase for the conference, minor equipment and printing. Because we, in the prior year, we haven't budgeted for conference or training due to the COVID, we deleted from the budget. And you will see in this year's budget and many departments added back costs or funding for conference and training and education. And this is one of the example. And so, this will lead to a total of net increase for finance department for about two thousand nine hundred dollars. Any questions for this slide? If no, we go to the next slide. The next slide is for police department. As you all may know, that the police department have many vacant positions due to, some of them are due to retirement and resignation of a few police officers. And that provide very big savings from the police department. It's about, I mean, it's over one point two million dollars. That contribute a huge saving and help to the overall general fund. In other words, if all those positions are filled, then, and if we don't get additional revenue coming to the city, that the future budget might face shortage or deficit. And other, other increase-decrease is, for example, the fifteen thousand decrease and increase actually is a wash, is a reallocation to the proper account. And we also have one hundred thousand dollar increase that approved by the city council to assist the police department in hiring. And that's the hiring incentive pay. And you will also see about five hundred thousand dollar increase due to the shortage of staffing. And also, we have seen increase in payouts due to retirement resignation of the PD staffs. And the other decrease is a line item transfer. And also, you see the decrease of two hundred forty-nine thousand dollars and be reallocated to the R-Power Fund. And also, it's not total, two hundred forty thousand dollars will be used from the R-Power Fund. As you may have known, the school district has agreed to fund fifty percent of this closing guard cost. Then, we have about ten thousand dollar increase for all the line items, including material, surprise, printing, and minor increase in professional services. And they all are under five thousand dollars. And as I mentioned, all those small increases line item, we will post them as a whole Citywide budget on the city's website. Any questions on the police slide?
Yes, in regards to overtime, chief, at a later time, can you just provide us a report along with working with Rose as to where we stand with our current overtime? I know it's probably going to be decreased, but I just want to see what the, what the percentage is in regards to how we, with the current officers that we have now.
Yes, sir.
Any more question on this slide? Okay. And now, we are going to the public work slide. Public work's most of the funding come from special revenue funds. They only have a very small portion from the general fund. We see about ten thousand dollar increase and due to the anticipated on cost services. And we have a very, very small, one thousand six hundred dollars due to minor cost for material and very small portion of overtime. That concludes the public work slide. Any questions? If no question, we're going to go to the recreation and community service department. And also, we see about hundred thousand dollar decrease from the recreation and community service. It's mainly from the reduction due to COVID and lots of programs have been temporary sustaining. However, we believe all lots of programs will come back around May or June, correct, Maria?
Yes, that is correct.
We see a small decrease transfer to the, to other account for the surprise and material for spring fest. And we also see a fifteen thousand dollar increase is to cover the portion that is going to happen around June for the downtown street market. Because we have removed that cost in the previous year due to COVID, now we putting it back. And you see the five thousand dollar increase is a wash from the previous transfer I mentioned. And then, you see outside printing for the downtown street market program that will happen in June. And also, we see about nineteen thousand dollar increase is mainly that used to replace the security door for the fifth floor of the city hall parking structure. And then, you see about nineteen thousand dollar increase, they all under five thousand dollars. And with limited of time, I won't list them here one by one. And they mainly to cover recreations, material and surprise, equipment rental, minor costs in consultant fees, and the added conference cost back. And because in the past year, we removed that cost due to COVID. And this concluded the slide for recreation. Any questions? Now, we go to the non-departmental slide. For this non-departmental and the may increase for transfer out, as I mentioned earlier, is the one point eight million transferred to Bowen Park at the beginning of the fiscal year to meet the shortage. However, we are going to see this full transfer reimbursed back to general fund from the sale of energy contracts. And we also see fifty-one thousand dollar increase in consultant services. And mainly, they are used for the sales tax ballot measure and also the research relate to that area. And you also see about hundred fifty thousand dollar increase that set aside here to meet the need of staff augmentation support that Iriga has explained before. And now, you see nine thousand three hundred dollars for the holidays racks and garlands for city hall and in the parking structure, the walkway. And it was a very beautiful decoration for Christmas and holidays. And you also see about twelve thousand dollar increase in bank charges. And there is about one thousand five hundred miscellaneous membership fee increase in the non-departmental area. Any questions for this slide? If no, now we go to the summary page. And it is still very good news to see the general fund ended with positive with the surplus of hundred forty-five thousand dollars, even though the city or we all have faced many challenges. And we thank the city councils' continued involvement and your guidance and all the staff's hard work to make this happen. And the next slide, I would like to show you the projection of the general fund reserve balance bar chart. And for the fiscal ending 2021, you have seen increase in general fund reserve balance. And this continue, will continue carry an impact to the current fiscal year. Next slide, please. And due to the limited time that we have, and I am just going to show you the summary of all other special revenue and other funds. And as you may see, we originally adopted total revenue of fifty-nine millions in revenue and fifty thousand, I mean, fifty million in expenditures. And we projected the revenue will go up to ninety-eight million because of all the grants that the city is going to expect it to receive. And we have received many, many grants this year. That's a good news from different department, from recreation, from planning, from public work, and from R-Power, and from the state and federal. A very, very good year. And so, with all those grants where we received, we are going to expect it increase in expenditure to ninety-one million. And with all those grant, we are going to do lots of wonderful projects for the city. Any questions? You will see all the line items breakdown for the special revenue funds and other fund. And they will be posted on the city's website also. And I would like to provide the city councils update on the R-Power. I know everybody has interest to know where we stand as of today with the R-Power, including myself. In the last couple of weeks, I have, I have my very dedicated staff. I want to, first, I want to thank Sharon, Jesus, and Yulin working non-stop with me in updating the budget in, and this R-Power. It takes lots of time to go into lots of study because they are new, they have lots of requirements, different category that we have to make sure they are in the right place in order for the Treasury Department approve our spending. As you may see here, we have allocated fifty percent of the total R-Power fund to the city. And also, we allocate fifty percent of them to the community. And we total of twenty-two point nine million we are going to get from the Treasury Department. And we have already appropriate seven million under the city portion for the revenue replacement portion and one point six million for the community portion. And then, we also appropriate, which means set aside or approved by the city council, and, or two point six nine million for all other categories and four point six eight million for the community. And we have appropriate, I, what I tried to say, sorry. And we, as of this day, we have about one point seven million available or remaining for the city's portion. And we have about five point one million remaining for the community portion. And we use subtotal of eight point six million for the revenue replacement portion. And the revenue replacement also call loss of revenue. They are very flexible that we can use them almost similar like the general fund. And which leave us about one point three million available under this category. The next page, or before I go to, oh, I go to next page, so everyone will see what adds up to all those amount. In this page, I listed all the projects and programs under all the proper categories and for the departments. And I am not going to go through these one... And I am not going to go through these one by one. And I have provided a hard copy to the E team and city council. I will also post them on the city's website. And in case anybody need more time to go through them or want to know each line item, they are there. And also, I am free to and I am happy to answer any question you may have, not only today, but after today, relate to all those APA project and fundings. And I also want to point out two items on this slide. Go all the way to the end. And under item number fifty three, we propose to we propose to allocate the community center, including senior center and teen center roof repair to the APA fund under the community section. Because they are going to directly benefit the senior, benefit the children and that use the teen center, the senior center and the community center. The reason we propose to reallocate this CIP to the APA fund here, so we can free the funding from the Queen B fund for the mural projects. And it will be more appropriate to use the Queen B fund for the mural project. And that's one thing I want to point out. And also, today I added the sixty thousand dollars for the student trip that you previously discussed. And however, after this meeting, when I go back to my office, I'm going to add more funding to this category with your direction provided previously. One twenty, yes, okay, I will do that. And any question you have for this APA update?
I do have a question, Rose.
Yes.
Would with council approval, obviously, would we be able to make modifications to any of these categories?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
With with council approval, would we be able to make a modification to any of these categories?
Uh, yes.
So if you if you go to page four under recreation, we've got the basic subsidy reimbursement program. We've got an appropriation of four hundred forty seven thousand four hundred dollars there. And as you can see expended today, we've only spent seventeen thousand seven fifty five from there. I I mean, honestly, I don't think that we're going to meet that criteria there. So I was at the job fair a couple of weeks ago, and I noticed that our technology center in the community center needs some updates as well as the teen center. Would council feel okay with allocating a hundred thousand dollars of those four hundred forty seven thousand dollars to upgrade the technology, the community center, as well as the teen centers, computers?
Absolutely.
And then one more request, council. I wanted to see from there also, we can allocate fifteen thousand dollars to put in two big screen TVs at the senior center. Because that helps the seniors with, I I've been there with, they have either PowerPoint presentations or whatever it is. I know that they've been asking for some TVs there at the senior center. So I think that I spoke with Maria, and she said that fifteen thousand dollars would would cover the the installation and the purchase of the two TVs. So it would just be allocating a hundred thousand dollars to upgrade the technology and the computers in the community center as well as the teen center. And then an additional thousand dollars for the two big screen TVs at the senior center.
Would you also, Mayor Protemp, would you also then recommend that the remaining balance just go back into the into the back into the into the balance for a later time?
Yeah, I mean, we can, you know, still use it for the subsidy program or just put it back to use it. I mean, because the money is there and it's, I mean, as you can see, it's only seventeen thousand that we spent from it. I don't think we're going to reach those four hundred forty seven thousand dollars.
Okay, yeah, well, then I have no problem with that. I we would just leave the balance onto that line item under forty five.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, just leave the balance there.
Okay, also, another piece of information is the money we allocated there. We have until December twenty twenty four to use them. And at any time, any future council meeting, if city council have any ideas or or recommendation, I can always update this list. Thank you.
Thank you.
So finally, I want to thank the mayor and members of city council for your efforts and commitment to make this city a better place and safe place for the resident and the community. I want to thank the E team members for all your help also to assist me, provide me information that I need to put all this together. And I want to thank my finance team again for their hard work and dedication. And thank you, everybody.
Thank you for that, Rose. I think it's, I mean, it's really good to know that we're in a surplus, even if it's a small amount, considering everything we're doing, especially with Be Proud and and the deficits that we are facing just with that program alone. So very excited about that. Council members don't have any comments, I can make a motion to approve and authorize director of finance to continue with the budget amendments and appropriations. Can I get a second?
Second, and thank you, Rose. That was very detailed and thank your staff and your team for putting this together.
Thank you. I I want to thank you also. In the previous year, you provide me suggestion to give more breakdown by departments. So in this presentation, I implement your suggestion in my presentation. Thank you.
So there is a motion on the floor, city clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, mayor. Mayor Manuel Estrada?
Yes.
Council member Alejandra Avila?
Yes.
Mayor Protemp Daniel Damian?
Yes.
Council member Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Council member Paul Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you for that. So we do have a finance authority regular meeting. We have a consent calendar. I will make a motion to pass that consent calendar. Can I get a second? City clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, mayor. Mayor Manuel Estrada?
Yes.
Council member Alejandra Avila?
Yes.
Mayor Protemp Daniel Damian?
Yes.
Council member Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Council member Paul Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you for that. And then we have the housing authority, and we do have a consent calendar for that, so I will make a motion to pass that consent calendar. Can I get a second? Okay, city clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, mayor. Mayor Manuel Estrada?
Yes.
Council member Paul Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Protemp Daniel Damian?
Yes.
Council member Alejandra Avila?
Yes.
Council member Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you for that. And so we are back to our city council, city clerk, city treasurer, staff requests and communications. I did want to request for staff to present, I'll just read it out. So staff to present to the city council at a future meeting, a formal proposal for the development of a mural arts project for the civic center, capitalizing on wall space on the parking structure and the metro link station, elevator tower, ideally suitable. We'd want to reach out to Chicano artist, the Orozco family. So if nobody's aware of the Orozco family, the Orozco family is actually, well, the Orozco brothers are descendants of of the artists who made murals at the Chicano Park. So if any of you have ever been to Chicano Park or heard of it, you know that it is very it's a very cultural and historic place. And then based on the design and what we're going for here in the downtown, I think an artist like that is completely suitable for what we're going for, where we're going to landscape the downtown, we're going to landscape the metro link, bring some color into it. Chicano art is very colorful. And I think it blends in well with the current art that we have at the metro link station, which is from Judy Baca, another very highly renowned Chicano artist. And we do have the Caesar Chavez Foundation coming in across the street, which is named after, of course, a very, very respected Chicano leader, putting in a cultural field to our downtown, a very unique one. And then, of course, playing on El Socalo, which is also a sort of sort of recognition of our of our Hispanic culture.
Mayor?
Yes.
I want to recognize Greg Orozco sitting over there. He's here with the Tough Kids program. It's a wrestling team. He's brought a lot of wrestlers into our high school program. So thank you for what you do for the community and and keeping our kids motivated and busy. I know you do a lot and you and your wife spend a lot of time working with their kids, and I wanted to make sure that our community know that you're very involved with them. And if you want to put your kids in wrestling at a young age, what age do they start, Mr. Orozco? At four years old. So you can imagine seeing four-year-olds wrestling. They're hilarious. So look for Tough Kids. It's a great program to keep them motivated, and it involves the parents, which is very important, parent involvement. So thank you. Thank you for that.
Great, thank you. Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
I have a staff request, and it's a holdup from last the last meeting that I wasn't here. I appreciate it. I would like to discuss at a future council meeting, the creation of a Baldwin Park Youth Commission to provide insight and needs to the city. This will help build leadership skills, prepare a professional career in public or community service, and attain a unique insight into how local government work. And part of the work that I'd like for them to do is maybe perhaps, you know, one of the items that we task them to do in the future is perhaps we could consider having a a youth city poet laureate. So that way, we could identify somebody, do the work with the school district. I think that would be a fantastic opportunity for some of our young artists in addition. In addition, I also want to have the chief police expand and revamp the reserve officer program. You know, allow for retired officers to support various functions and the department and to train residents to perhaps become reserve officers. Chief, as you know, this is something that we want to ensure that, you know, as we lean forward, we're thinking about the the quality of life issues in which, you know, civilians could help support your mission and also be part of our city and be continue to be part of the fabric of Baldwin Park. Thank you. Great, thank you. So and then I did have some additions. I just want I know that we're having our mental health event, and the great thing about it, I think, is that it's becoming an annual event that not only focuses on mental health and our community's well-being, but it's becoming a fundraiser for organizations in the city. So I think it's been announced, this year, we're focusing on the marching bands, service to high school and Baldwin Park High School. And so I know that we're fundraising through our vendors and the people who will be attending, but I want to make sure that the city finds a way to allocate a small grant funding on behalf of the city itself. And I think you actually freed up a couple of dollars in the in the ARPA category earlier, so I think that might be a viable space, but if not, you can seek out get out the appropriate funding. And then I believe that we have another meeting before that event, so we can approve it then if necessary. But I don't expect it to be too too big of a of a donation, so it should be okay for for the chief executive officer to take care of that. And then we do have SB nine one four, so I wanted to write, I wanted for the city to write a letter of support for SB nine one four. SB SB nine one four is a is a bill that has been introduced by our very own Senator Susan Rubio, which would make sure that homeless services and and resources also include giving access to those that are on the streets because of domestic violence. As we know, domestic violence is a very serious issue that we all that's very, unfortunately, it it's 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 around, right? Especially in working-class communities and people of color. So we want to make sure that we support these bills, which would in turn make sure that there's funding and would help cities like ours offer services for domestic violence victims. And I know that council expressed some support for those for that category of victims earlier. So there's that. And then speaking of homelessness efforts, I just want to remind Sam that earlier in the couple of meetings ago, we did give you the ability to waive the twenty five thousand dollar limit on spending to make sure that you are able to work viciously on the tiny homes that we're looking to open by September for children with young, for families with young children. So those are my comments. Anybody else has any questions, comments, or concerns? If not?
Mayor, a brief announcement. You approved on the consent calendar, the employment contract for Henry Chalas, the accounting manager. He happens to be here. We wanted to introduce him. Henry, welcome.
Very nice. Nice. Likewise, thank you. You'll find that you have the best mayor in the San Gabriel Valley, so.
Thank you, Henry, for showing up. I can use lots of help for the finance department. Thank you and welcome.
Yes, very nice. Great. So definitely welcome to the Baldwin Park team. We're excited to have you. So I think it looks like we're all done. Thank you for joining us today.
I'll just need to report out a closed session since we won't be going back in, mayor.
Yes, so it seems like we will adjourn both meetings simultaneously. So chief, city attorney, go ahead and report out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did, city council reviewed several items in closed session. They took no final action on any of the closed session agenda items, so there's no reportable action. And that concludes my report.
Thank you for that, city attorney. So at this moment, I will move to adjourn the special meeting and our regular meeting. Can I get a second? Any objections? If not, good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Recording stopped.